Good evening and welcome to the ZBA meeting, May 15. If you all rise for the elective allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, May 19, 2023. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, May 19, 2023. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, June 4, 2023. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. I believe the first item we have on the agenda is 23013-68 North Turnpike Road. Is there anybody here for that? Want to come up here?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, you want to announce who will be voting this evening?
Oh, I forgot all about that. That's correct. You can have a seat if you want. Tonight's meeting, we will have Bob Gross filling in for Tom Wolfher, Bob Parisi filling in for Joe Rusick, Bruce Conroy, he'll be on the phone, Karen Harris, and myself, Ray Rice. Okay.
Do you want me to read?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments for application number 23013, which is Appeal of Decision of ZEO Cease and Desist Order for 68 North Turnpike Road. Application number 23013 is an appeal of a cease and desist order issued July 30, 2021, for the continued violation first issued August 20, 2020, for the unpermitted expansion of a special permit for nonconforming use at 68 North Turnpike Road in a DD 40 district. Appeal period is 15 days per Section 9.1(c)(1) of the zoning regulations, and no appeal was taken during that time period, which expired in August 2021. The Board cannot approve the request for Section 9.1(c)(1) expired appeal period. Furthermore, the applicant applied for and was denied variance request for same September 20, 2021. The town has filed legal action that is currently pending in the Connecticut Superior Court system to compel action and remediation for the aforementioned violation. I also have here a copy of the cease and desist order that's dated July 30, 2021. And that's all we have for correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You want to identify yourself and address, please, and use the microphone.
My name is Farhan Siddiqui, 68 North Turnpike Road, Wallingford.
Speak a little closer.
It's not coming?
Closer.
Oh. 68 North Turnpike Road, or Farhan Siddiqui, 68 North Turnpike Road, Wallingford, Connecticut. And she's my wife, Samira Farhan.
Speak into the mic, please.
We have four kids, so we on the business because we have a triplet, they are sitting there behind, and we don't know the, because the properties we buy like a house is not like the, you know, the gas station kind, this is the first property we bought. So he was sick like encephalitis, and he don't remember the names and things and the rules and regulation. He's thinking that this is my property, the gas station, so I have to clean everything neat and clean and make it beautiful. So he did all work by himself. He don't know, because we do usually buy the house, and we do the cleaning and the stuff and trees, we don't need that, you know, for permission for that. So he was thinking like that, and he did that things, and they said this is violation. And after that, we come to them, and they said remove these things and these things, and we did whatever they said us, we remove. But the couple of things we don't want to remove because we saw a lot of people have to put the stones in their front, and we have the pictures in Wallingford, the Wallingford town allowed them, so why we remove that stones? That they make that look beautiful, and we have 500 people sign paper, they love our place, they said you make it beautiful. So we don't understand which the things, they have a problem, the town, the water goes, we make that thing, that we removed everything. So that's we come here, and he explained whatever he knows.
Can I give those 513 people who signed it the papers? Because I went there to give it, they said, no, bring it here.
Well, you can bring that and leave it here?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
And I have the paper for my encephalitis issue, that I don't remember names, faces, locations.
Use the microphone, use, please.
And I have the doctor's paper here, that I don't remember names, faces, location, any memory. It's called encephalitis. That is in other police reports and everything else also, and I have the pat report also, because I even haven't submitted for my property tax sometimes because I don't remember things. I haven't filed my sales tax for my company back in when I lose the memory and everything, and they waived everything. That, everything is in court and state. So this is the paper I want you to review, what Yale says about myself.
He want to say that we are not violating, we have to not remember the things, this is the thing. We are submitting the doctor paper.
And that's in 2013, when I lost my memory, my kids, everything. I still don't remember names and faces and like what happened yesterday. And your officer knows about that from day one, because I sent my daughter to meet them the first time when they came in on August, August 20, 2020. And at that time, that condition, front only condition which we leaving now, that was there in August 202020. And my daughter went to meet them, she's 16 years old at that time, now she's at college, that's why she hasn't came in. And they went to meet them, they explained to them what needs to be done, I emailed them the same day. I checked my emails because I don't remember, that I will contact you as soon as she mentioned that, okay, you have one month, and then I forgot. That's why I didn't submit it the first request. You can verify this all information from them, that do he remember things or not? And that's the basic thing, I forgot everything to do, that I'm cleaning up outside, I'm doing everything. My kids even painted something, I have the pictures of that, every neighbor knows about that.
Okay. Do we have any questions up here from the commission?
Not from me.
Not at this point yet. Nothing? About Bruce, Bruce, do you have any questions?
Yeah, what exactly, if I can ask, Amy, what exactly can we do with this case if we can't make, we can't prove it, right?
Want to answer that, Amy?
Per the regulations, the Board cannot act or approve this appeal because the appeal period expired after 15 days in 2021.
So we can take no action on this at all today?
You cannot approve it. You can take action, you must deny it, because you cannot hear it, it is already beyond the ZBA.
All right, I just wanted, I thought, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make it clear. Thank you.
Okay, you all set?
Yep.
I have some information, that's the issue that I reported multiple times. First of all, I have not received the cancellation of this kind of meeting. I never received it. They have my old check of $60 still with the town. I met to the mayor, I mentioned that, and they mentioned that we will be sending you because they received back that decision of here. So I haven't received that also. Besides that, what they were saying, the attorney, the town attorney, the, they were not accepting my papers whenever I was submitting that I need to do this, I need to do, they were not accepting it. So finally, the attorney, I requested attorney, and she said, no, you can submit it, and that's up to them if they approve it or not approve. Why I was able to submit it, they were not taking it at all. At least five times, I went there, these papers, which you see that, that I removed the U-Haul, that's what they were, problem with my, if you see the first 2021 decision of the judges, that they mentioned that, no, we are not approving it because there was U-Haul here, that was the complaint from the neighbors, and the water was going to the back because of the backyard, I covered it. Now I removed that, this is grass, and the U-Haul is done forever. That was basically since one year ago.
Okay. Is there anybody out in the audience that wants to speak for the application? Anybody, are you speaking for?
I have the pictures that you did clean up, I can show them that.
This is my son, one of my son.
Hello, um, I can, um...
Name and address, please.
Shisidiki, 78 Short Beach Road, Branford, Connecticut. I can reach for him and say that I helped paint the walls that he wanted me to paint, to like make it look more aesthetic and look good. Yeah.
At all?
Yeah.
Actually, we all, he want to say that we...
I'm not in the public right now, please. Anybody else in the public want to speak for it, or anybody against it? Okay, we'll bring that back up to the table now. Anybody else here on the commission want to say anything?
So essentially, we can't do anything, and plus it's in court, it's that too, right?
This decision that is being appealed had an appeal period of 15 days.
Understand.
That's...
So it's over with?
Yes. The appeal period has expired.
So he has to go through another avenue to do this.
You cannot approve this.
Right, that's, so we're, there's nothing to talk.
Right. Do we have a motion here on the table? Yes, Mr. Parisi?
Chairman, I'd like to move that we deny the application.
Do you want me to read this?
Read it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the appeal of decision ZEO Cease and Desist Order dated July 30, 2021, for the violation of Special Permit Number 408-03 and the expansion of nonconforming use at 68 North Turnpike Road.
We haven't moved, oh, you moved it, okay, she moved it. Okay, we have a motion?
Do we have a second?
We're going to vote now.
I second it.
Okay. The motion to deny, Mr. Conroy?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Gross? Ms. Harris?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Parisi?
No, to approve.
No, to deny?
Yes, to deny.
Yes, to deny, though, and Chairman Rice?
Yes, to deny. Your application's denied. That's it. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is 23014, a variance request, Doughty 32 Cardinal Drive. Do you have correspondence, Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have staff comments for application 23-014, variance requests for Doughty 32 Cardinal Drive. Applicant seeks front yard of 37 feet, where 40 feet is required, and side yard of 9 feet, where 20 feet is required, to construct a 572-square-foot two-story addition at 32 Cardinal Drive in R18 district. The Board should consider the fact that should the applicant alternatively locate or size the proposed addition less, or no variance approval would be necessary. For example, flush with the front of the existing dwelling or locating simply one foot forward and extending remainder to the rear of the dwelling, then the front yard variance would not be required. Locating the addition to the rear or vertical addition to existing dwelling would require no variance approval. The ability to construct compliant additional living space raises the question as to hardship versus preference.
Any correspondence?
And that is it for correspondence.
Come on up. Make sure you talk into the mic and identify yourself and your address, please.
Brett Doughty, 32 Cardinal Drive, Wallingford.
Ashley Doughty, 32 Cardinal Drive, Wallingford.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to?
Yeah, our hardship is that we're looking to expand and add more square footage to our house. We have a, currently, we have a one-year-old, and we're expecting another child, so we need more square footage and storage would be nice, too. And where we are on the map is that we're landlocked from going off to the other side.
Try to talk into the mic.
We're landlocked going off from the right. In the back, we have another addition that bumps off, and the pool's in the back, so our option would be to go off the left side of the house, which would put us over the, which would put us over the variance line.
Just a little bit over, as she...
Say again?
Just a little bit over, as she mentioned, in all areas, it's not a large ask in terms of variance-wise. We don't want to build up where we currently are because that would create a lot of like displacement for the fact that we have a baby and we have another one coming, so we'd have to leave our house altogether if we just go up on our current dwelling. So it would be more beneficial to our family just to be able to go off the side.
Yeah, and all of our HVAC is located in our attic right now, so that would be another issue to go through.
Anything else?
We would appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, we'd like Wallingford.
We love it.
Been here two years.
We're Elks members, I was a social worker at Moses Y. Beach for three years, we love it here, and we'd like to stay here.
Yeah.
You have questions here from the commission? I'm going to call on, Bruce, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Back to the table here, any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Have you thought about making some of the modifications that were addressed in the staff comments, so that you're not looking for a variance or you're reducing the amount of the variance that you'd be requesting? Have you considered those alternatives?
Yeah, yeah, going up would be hard because I, we have the HVAC that runs all, all the duck work runs in our attic, so going up would be more of a challenge. And also, like, where to configure, where the stairs would be going in and stuff would be more of a challenge. With the size, I mean, that's the size we kind of chose on because we thought that would be the most beneficial to our family, and especially if, you know, we continue to grow our family, and we don't have a garage either, so like, storage is an issue. So we, you know, we thought that would be the most reasonable size that we could do to have as much storage and room as we would need for our family.
Well, what is the hardship? The hardship is supposed to be relative to the piece of property.
Yeah. To go off any other part of our house, there's a lot of interference, so like, off to the right, we can't go because we're butted up right to the variance line. Off the back of the house, there's a pool there, so we wouldn't be able to go off the back. And then off the back left side, there's another addition that sits on piers off of the back of the house, which would be hard to, to construct something off of that. And we'd like to, you know, add a full foundation there, too, for additional storage.
The hardship would be that also we can't afford to, like, move that, move from that house. So this would just allow us to stay where we are in the neighborhood that we love and where our kids will go to school, and it's just a really nice part of town that we appreciate and we're putting value into by building the house up. And it's only, we're just adding two bedrooms and a bathroom in storage, so it just suits the needs of our family. And we've gotten several, like, a lot of places have come and give us, given us quotes and drawings, and this is the most, basically the only way we can do it without disrupting our whole family and having to like leave for six-plus months while, like, I'm pregnant, so with a newborn and a one-year-old, that's, that would be a hardship, too.
Well, the hardship is relative to the piece of property.
There's no room, that's the only thing we can do based on the property line, that's the hardship. That's what we were told when we applied for this, too, that that would be an acceptable reason, that we literally couldn't do anything else.
I don't have anything further.
You're done?
Yeah.
Just a question, you mentioned a pool, what kind of pool do you, and where is it located to the back of the house?
It's an above-ground...
Above-ground off the back right side.
We have the map, if you want. Oh, okay.
So it's right there. Yeah, I, yeah, I see it right, I just want to, well, sometimes, all right, thank you.
Now, if the pool wasn't there, you could expand back, right?
Yeah, and there's a big deck off the back of the house, too, that connects to the pool.
A deck, too?
Yeah, there's a deck that connects to the pool. There's a deck that connects into the pool.
That's on the house, too, it's all connected.
Oh, the deck is on the pool, it's not on the house.
No, it is on the house.
Oh, because you had mentioned that as a hardship, and that's really not a hardship.
I'm sorry, what, what's not a hardship?
If you were to take the pool down and the deck, you can expand to the back, correct?
The deck is attached to the whole house, the whole backside of the house.
Yeah, you walk off, walk out the back sliders, and you're on the deck, and then the deck walks to the pool.
So is there any other alternative?
Not as, not as we see it, which is why we went through this application. I mean, we got three different construction companies to come out and, and give us these plans, which is why we are here.
Is this a ranch-style house?
Yeah.
It's not raised ranch?
No, ranch. Single-floor ranch.
And going up is not an option?
No, because all the HVAC is in the ceiling, and there's nowhere for the stairs, we were told.
Because I think your next-door neighbor went up, didn't they?
Oh, I don't know.
We've only been there for two years.
Oh, well, I seen the house on the right, and it appears it either went up or the house was built that way.
Yeah, I don't know, it's the, house is built that way.
That house is a mess.
Okay, any other questions from the commission? Bob? No? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak for this application? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak against this application? If not, we'll move that back up here for a possible vote. Pardon? Oh, did you have anything to say, Amy?
Just to reiterate comments earlier, there was just sort of some suggested, which is, if there's a complying option, of course, we want to note it. However, you can also approve one variance and not the other. For example, as I said, if the, if the addition were flush with the existing front of the house, instead of four feet more forward, and that same area pushed to the back, there's no front yard variance. And, and just, just food for thought, whether or not that's something feasible or not. But in other words, there's two variances being requested, so there is always the option of either lessening either one or both, or eliminating one and approving the other, so just to make note that those are options for the Board. It doesn't have to be an all or nothing, if you're so inclined.
Okay. Yeah, if you want.
So I have a follow-up question related to what Amy just said. Have you looked at that alternative to make the front flush and move it back so that you'd be eliminating one of the variances that you're requesting? And is that doable?
The only concern I would have is that back additions on piers, so like tying into that may be a little difficult, but we haven't, like, really thought it out. That's why I just thought it'd be easier coming off the front instead of the back because of that addition that's there now.
And we have thought it out. They recommended not attaching it that far back on the addition that's on piers, which is why we had to do the front. And this is after several conversations with the town as well, like, with these plans, like, my husband went and sat down with, do you remember who you sat down with? Oh, he went and sat down and like drew this out that, to fit what was already there.
What's the concern with attaching to the addition that's on piers?
Like, the regulation.
The roof line, connecting the roof line to the house. I just figured it would be easier coming off the front than trying to reconfigure the roof line in the back because of the way it slopes. It'd be easier if we just came out three, four feet out of the front. Might be a little better look, too.
Anything else?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All done? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the variance request for front yard of 37 feet, where 40 feet is required, to construct a 572-square-foot two-story addition at 32 Cardinal Drive, as shown on the plot plan, prepared for J.C. Builders, care of Rowan Marke, Marke, 32 Cardinal Drive, dated May 15, 2017, and submitted plans received April 6, 2023.
We have a motion and a second.
We did, it was about Parisi, okay, forgive me. Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy?
No, to approve.
Mr. Gross? Mr. Gross. Ms. Harris.
No to approve.
Mr. Parisi.
No to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
No to approve.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a, uh, motion to approve the variance request for side yard of nine feet, where twenty feet is required, to construct a five-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot two-story addition at Thirty-two Cardinal Drive, as shown on the plot plan, prepared for J.C. Builders, care of Rowan Markeet. Thirty-two Cardinal Drive dated May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, and submitted plans received April sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
We have a motion on the table. We have a second. Second, Bob Gross.
Motion to approve the side yard variance, Mr. Conroy.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Gross.
No.
Ms. Harris.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
Yes, to approve. Okay.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
You have approval for a side yard variance, but not for the front yard.
And can, can I ask why? I'm just curious. Is it okay to ask why?
Board can answer that?
Just because?
Well, it's a-
Because there's an alternative. You can be compliant if you move it back. So there is an alternative. To ex, to explain that in, in alternate terms, when the, the board is mentioning hardship, the hardship is a land, not a preference, unfortunately. Has nothing to do with the individuals or the amount of children or space, unfortunately. So what they're saying is there wasn't enough demonstration that you couldn't comply with the front variance, but they grant you to do the side.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our next is twenty-three fifteen, a variance request by McEnville at Forty-five North Turnpike Road. You have correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have staff comments, um, related to application twenty-three zero-one-five, variance request, McEnville, Forty-five North Turnpike Road. Applicant requests front yard of thirty-one-point-three feet, where forty feet is required, to allow a vertical addition at Forty-five North Turnpike Road in an R-eighteen district. Applicant has already constructed the vertical addition without zoning approval or necessary building permits. Applicant inquired of Planning and Zoning Office how to potentially pursue an addition and/or an additional dwelling unit at the parcel in April two thousand twenty-two. Applicant was advised no additional dwelling units are permitted, and an A-two survey would be required for any addition. In this particular case, the structure appeared as though it may be encroaching front setback from the information the office had available. A-two survey would determine whether existing structure was in fact compliant, and a building permit could be issued for vertical addition. Or if existing dwelling was shown to be encroaching into the front setback, then a variance request with accompanying survey would be required to expand that nonconformity. As a result of blight complaints and follow-up on blight violation, the Building Department noted unpermitted construction in progress in August two thousand twenty-two and substantially completed in October two thousand twenty-two. To date, no building permits have been issued for the fully constructed vertical addition. The survey enclosed with this application was prepared on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, but only provided to the Planning and Zoning Office for the first time in April two thousand twenty-three, confirming the need for variance approval before issuance of any building permit for construction commencement. Survey confirms the property is in zoning violation. This variance request is to remediate the violation and allow the expansion of a nonconforming I also have here an interdepartmental memorandum dated October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, from Amy Torre, Land Use Specialist, Zoning Enforcement Officer. And that is it.
Okay.
And that's it.
Bruce, do you have any questions of the, I'm sorry, forget it.
Christopher McEnville, uh, one-seventy-six Peters Lane, Rockfall.
You?
My father is Houston. He is out of state right now, so he told me to, he had me come and appear for him.
Do you have any answers to the?
So, um, the building didn't change. The only thing that changed was there were, there was a dormer on it, and they squared it up. Like, the front didn't, the front of the house is still the front of the house. It didn't come forward at all. And he squared it up because the stairway going up, it was harder to get furniture up there and, and, you know, mattresses and stuff like that, it was a lot harder. And the house had been in disrepair for years and years and years. There was a gentleman that was interested in buying it. That fell through because he had died. So we came in and started doing a full cleanup and stuff like this. My father was under the assumption that he could not make it bigger, but he does not understand, he did not understand about the dormer. He, so in the front of the house, it was, it was, the roof was, the roof was different, and he, he just squared it up so that the stairway would be accessible, accessible more. There's no more room on the, like, there's nothing on the front that hangs over or anything. It's all still the same in the front of the house.
Okay. Anything else?
Unless you have some questions, I don't know.
Bruce, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Is, I, I believe that you, that the zoning enforcement, the zoning office told you how to come for a variance to do anything. Is that correct? Amy, is that correct?
We had an inquiry of the office in approximately April of two thousand twenty-two for some potential thoughts on, on what to do with the property, and the vertical expansion was raised. At that time, that, we couldn't tell from what was available to us whether or not that would require a variance approval, um, because we would need to determine where the existing house was, and what we had at our disposal could not answer that. So we said, you can't do anything without a, without a survey, which is a requirement for any building permit. That was the last we heard, until the Building Department advised us, the, our office, that the construction had commenced. And again, we were privy to that survey, which was, in fact, solicited in May of two thousand twenty-two, but we had never seen it. So, so we advised ahead that even a vertical addition, if it's nonconforming, requires a variance, and that that's what this is. There is dormers on either side of the structure, but it affects that front nonconforming boundary, unfortunately, and it's still an expansion. So you get to have what doesn't conform, certainly by me being grandfathered in, but once we expand it, it requires variance approval.
All right, so, um, it sounds like you, that you were, that you were notified and then built it anyway.
I, no, I don't think so, because we were originally going to make a bigger addition and add on to the house quite a bit. That's what our plans were going to be. And then, um, they had told them that they would have to go through variances and do all this stuff. And, um, he didn't want to go through all that. He just wanted to fix it up and have it, you know, because it was, it was quite a wreck. And, um, he's put quite a bit of money into it, and it's, you know, it's all sited and it's, it's better now than it was, and it looks better from the street. But we had this bigger addition planned, and he didn't go through with that because he was under the assumption that he would have to go through a variance, and he didn't want to do the variance. So when he went and did all this, you know, the fixing up and the siding, and I know that I met with a building official out there one time, and he was worried about, um, closing in the house, uh, because we were in the middle of doing some work during the winter. And he was like, oh, you should close all this up, and I want to see this closed up. I don't remember who that was. I met with him once or twice, but, so he didn't add on to the, the house didn't come forward anymore. It was just the dormer over the stairway, that he really just squared up the front of the house. I don't know if you have a picture of it in there, over there. And he was not under the assumption that that was changing it, because it didn't change the footprint of the house. It wasn't like the second floor came out anymore, like, that the bedrooms are still the walls of the bedroom up there. It was just that he squared it up upstairs, so it didn't overhang, and he wasn't aware of what they maybe were asking of him.
All right, so you, so you don't, you were not aware that you needed a building permit to do just about anything?
I'm not really sure what went on with the building permit and what didn't go on with the building permit. I wasn't, you know, sometime I'm involved in it, sometime I'm not. I just know that, um, he was fixing up the building to make it look better, because it was quite a wreck. I mean, the siding was riding off it, and, um, it looked like, you know, it looked like hell out there.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I have a, a question. And that is, you don't, you don't live there, correct?
We do not.
And your father, does he live there?
He does not.
He does not? May I ask, who does live there?
Right now?
Yes.
No, and it's vacant. So it's a rental property. We have many in town. And, you know, we have them, and they look, you know, we have our buildings looking nice, you know, vinyl siding and, you know, not garbage, and this place just got out of control by the guy that was living there that was going to buy it. And, uh, it just, and then it just, it was deteriorating from, you know, the older wood and, and all that stuff. So, that when he had died and the, uh, everybody moved out and got out of there, it took a little while for that, because there was a lot of, a lot of junk in the back. There was a lot of, the guy used to do, like, art sculpturing with metal and stuff, so it took a while for them to get out of there. So once he did.
So the property is significantly improved from what it was a few years ago?
Oh, yeah, it's all vinyl sited now. It's got all brand-new windows in it. It's, you know, empty inside. It's got all the material that we need to finish it up. It's just that. And like I said, he didn't understand when they told him he, he was, because we wanted to put on an addition, and he didn't, he said, I don't want to go through all the variance and all that stuff there. So he didn't realize just cover, just straightening, squaring it up in the front was a problem.
So originally, you expected to expand the footprint, and were told you'd have to get variances. He decided against expanding the footprint and just going vertical, and so he didn't realize at that time that he needed to come for a variance.
Right. My father is older.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I get it. Thank you.
Question. Where, were building permits pulled on this property? Do you know, permits were pulled?
They had a permit at the time of the initial inquiry of our office, of the Planning and Zoning Office, and of the Town Planner and myself. There was a permit for windows, siding, and roof. At that time, we explained to the property owner that an A-two survey is required for every addition to pull a permit. So it's not just for the variance. They did get the survey. A month later, I don't, they, they would not have received Planning and Zoning sign-off because it requires a variance, so therefore, no permit can be pulled. And the front of the house is encroaching nearly ten feet, which means ten feet of that house expanded vertically, not just the front edge, that, that being the issue, unfortunately. That's, but eve, even if a variance wasn't necessary, the survey would be necessary for zoning approval to pull a permit for it.
I mean, this is, this is probably not the gentleman that you spoke to then, because you said you spoke to the property.
We did, we, we spoke to the property, his, his father, the property owner, at, a year ago.
Right. And you also said your, your father has other properties in town here.
Right.
I have a hard time understanding, not knowing, based on speaking to you or your office, that he should have been aware or was aware and just didn't do it. This is just, I'm-
Because he had the permit for the roofing. We, we didn't, we didn't add on to that. The front of the house is the front of the house. It just, it went, it's straight up instead of that dormer.
You said you went on, you said you expanded the dormers. You squared them off. You changed the dormers.
You squared the front of, you squared the, the side of the house up, yeah.
So you changed the looks of the house.
When he put the roof on, yeah.
You changed the looks and you changed the size of the house.
If you look at the front, yeah, it's, it's squared up instead of, like, at an angle now.
And he owns other properties.
What's that?
And he owns other properties in the community.
Yeah, but the other properties, we don't, they're really just like, we don't ever have to go through any of the building stuff. They're already completed.
But he knew to go to Planning and Zoning or to, to the department. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions down here? Bob, or Bob, is there any questions?
Do you understand what the problem is with the property?
No, and I don't think he does either, because-
Well, I would suggest that you come in and meet with the staff and get, find out what's going on.
We, we understand that they don't like, that there's something with the dormer, now that, because it's squared up.
There's, there's a lot more than that. There really isn't. When you, when you get a notice, you've got to respond to it. You can't just say, you know, I'm not going to bother, because all that adds up against you.
But was an, uh, see, I'm not fully aware of this, so it's kind of, yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to, trying to clarify for you.
Right.
Because I get the feeling you're not the prime person in the case that understands what's going on. I would suggest that you try to get together with the staff, and I'm sure they'll be as helpful as they can to you, make you understand what's happening. That's important.
We understand that they don't like that dormer part, where they don't like it squared up, and that they want, they wanted, the, the dormer should have stayed the way when he put the roof on, when he put the new roof on.
But there's more than one thing. That's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not going to go into it, but you get with the staff, and I'm sure she, she's normally very helpful of people.
We just, you know, we want to see what we can do to go forward with this and-
No, you can't go forward. That's a problem.
So what, you just leave it like that?
Well, it's, uh, basically, it stays the way it is, right?
If, first of all, if I may clarify to the board, um, we didn't have a violation on this property, because we didn't know. We were trying to assist with the process, um, to move forward with an addition of any sort would require the survey. Evidently, the property owner obtained a survey. So, but not a building permit, because a building permit, again, if it would require our sign-off from the Town Planner or myself, that it was compliant with the zoning regulations. It, it was explained at the time that a vertical addition, when you put a dormer on, you are adding more space on the second floor. It may be a small amount, but you're expanding. And ten feet of, the front of the house, ten feet back, nearly ten feet, is encroaching on the front setback, so you've expanded something that didn't conform. Unfortunately, we're married to these regulations that are in place today. There, there is a lot of, certainly a lot of confusion about vertical additions requiring, you know, the same footprint requiring variances. They do. They always do. This board has had to grant them, or, or not, um, in, in multitude of circumstances, even so much as for a bathroom dormer, six or eight foot. It's an expansion. That's the regulation you're, would be necessary to ask for relief from, from this board in order to construct. But more importantly, the survey, which would tell this office or anybody else whether or not it was compliant, or the Building Department, was never provided to any of us. Department, was never provided to any of us, but it existed. I saw it for the first time with this application. So there was no violation issued, because until I saw it, I didn't know there was a violation. But the process was relayed. And even if we had planned on a larger expansion or a larger addition and elected not to do it, any addition would have required showing that survey and pulling a permit. And it was the building official in the course of inspections and total deference and agreement, the property looks way better. Nobody's taking that away. But they had some blight issues with the property that they were addressing from the Building Department. And in the course of that, advised us that there was some construction that was not permitted. That was the first time it was brought to our attention. But again, we can't give a violation if we don't know it's a violation.
Right.
And that became clear in April of two thousand and twenty-three at the point of this application. That clarifies the order of events. So it's not... They're technically in violation, but we didn't know that, so we're not going to say they did not ignore or... They did not ignore a violation notice. There was none issued, so I want to clarify that.
Prior to you making these repairs and addition, what was the structure of the house? Was this a single-family house?
Yeah, it's a single-family house. Hasn't changed.
And it had... It had it upstairs?
It had it upstairs, yeah. But the stairway was short. So when you brought stuff up, you had to... Like, they had to cut the mattress in half to get it up there, or the box spring to get it up there, because the stairway was shorter. You know, because of that, the roof line, it was down a lot further.
But with these dormers, it made it bigger up there then, too?
It makes the stairway a normal stairway. The stairway has stayed the same. It hasn't moved. It's still in the same place. The squared footage in the rooms are the same. The rooms are still the same. They don't... The walls haven't moved or changed. It's still this original framing up there.
Okay. We go out?
Very small house.
Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak for this application? Anybody against? Okay, we're bringing it back up here for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the variance request for front yard of thirty-one point three feet where forty feet is required to construct a vertical addition at forty-five North Turnpike Road as shown on zoning location survey, second floor addition, prepared for Huston McEnville, number forty-five Turnpike Road, dated May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and submitted photographs received April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, sir.
Bob Parisi seconded.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
No to approve.
I'm sorry. I went out of order.
I'm sorry.
You're good. Not being... I just went... I hopped over Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
No to approve. Motion failed.
So what's our next step?
We're going to have to get together with the zoning department.
But they can't change that decision.
Pardon?
They can't change that decision, right?
Not our decision. Go ahead.
You can appeal that decision. That denial would appeal to the court if you would like to avail yourself of an appear period of the ZBA's decision. We don't have the decision in the office. We can assist you how to fix it, and again, the end would be change it or remove it or make it compliant of the portion that is noncompliant.
So we can appeal the decision, then?
To the court.
Or just leave it like that and do nothing with it?
No, you won't be... You're leaving it in violation. The property will be... Is in violation.
But if we're not doing anything with it, like, there's no... You can't live in there.
You may appeal the decision. It's your right, just as it is to come here and request the variance. That is anybody's right. And your father, the property owner, was advised it would be, you know, difficult because of the lack of hardship. But the board has made... Rendered their decision, and your appeal, your right to appeal, is to the court. You're appealing the denial of the variance request if you choose to avail yourself of that right.
All right. So I'm just looking at what we can do to... What's our next step to do this right or not to do?
To remove what is in violation.
But you can't, because then you have to cut the roof off.
You will be in violation. You can remedy the violation or choose not to.
All right. So who do we have to go talk to next?
You can come to... If you want to remedy the violation, you may come to the Planning and Zoning Office and find out how to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Or you may appeal it, the determination.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yep.
Of April seventeenth? Do we have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, Bob Parisi. Roll call on that, because Bruce is... Bruce?
Motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Conroy, you're on the phone.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
Yes to approve. We have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Conroy.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
Yes to approve. We are no... We are out of session now.
Have a good night, everybody.
Make care.
Good night.
Night, Bruce. Thank you.